To order. Here.
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 Okay, other than Lake Cam, is anyone recording the meeting? I don't see our student reps.
No, we'll be sure that they are here for our 16th meeting on the 6th, February 16.
Okay, all right, will you join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, anyone here for public participation? No, okay, we were just gonna, I was asked to remind you if you did, please use the podium. Okay, thank you for that. Acceptance of minutes from January 19. Do we have a motion?
Motion to accept the minutes from January 19.
Have a second? Thank you, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries, and the executive session, minutes of the same date. Don't move. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Yes, Mr. Owen?
We just should hang on to the executive session minutes because until negotiations are complete.
That is true.
Hold.
Hold, hold till we're done, yep. All right, so item five is the presentation.
So, Mrs. Fox, Chair, if you would like, I think we can get through a lot of the agenda. If you want to go through all that and then just conclude with the presentation.
Sounds wonderful.
If that makes sense.
Everybody good with that? All right, so we'll go on to Ms. Lee's.
This will be a FY 22 budget update.
Sorry, let me just grab mine. Okay, so included in your packet is a general fund overview for FY 22 year-to-date through January 27th. The revenue is $21.9 million, and expenditure budget balance after incumbences or open purchase orders of $4.7 million are comparable when reviewing the activities from the prior year same time period. I will continue to closely monitor the results of operations compared to the budget as we proceed through the spring months. We are watching various accounts at this time to include the cost of substitutes due to absences in the last few months, and obviously utilities, as we've mentioned before, but believe that these costs will be offset by some salary savings. As far as the assessment sheet, there is no update from the last meeting. I know there was a question about Circuit Breaker last meeting. The increase in the reimbursement was due to the increase in eligible costs allowed by the state and also the allowability of out-of-district transportation, where for the first time the district is allowed to include 25% as an allowable item as a result of the Student Opportunity Act. As a result, we should be able to see increased aid in future years in Circuit Breaker as they are phasing in the out-of-district transportation. Next year, that rate will be a 50% transportation reimbursable rate. The out-of-district transportation was about $335,000 at the rate of 25%. That's about $100,000 of the increase was just from that. And of course, for Circuit Breaker, there is a one-year look back period. And as far as COVID CARES funding, there is no additional updates at this time, and that would conclude my FY 22 budget update.
How many out-of-district do we have?
We have 35 currently.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Owen.
I know in the last number of years, even going back to a few predecessors of yours, we went down an avenue of outsourcing some of that. Is it, do we still have outsourcing of the out-of-district, or is it all in-house?
That's correct, it's an outsourced, actually, there's a mix of different vendors we're using.
Okay.
And we're currently exploring avenues of trying to consolidate some of that a bit.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, if I recall, we went back and forth on that.
Yeah, it was some that was advantageous, some that were not.
And some that were not, exactly, exactly. All right, thank you for that. Now we have the DESI guidelines COVID.
So this is relatively brief tonight. What I, first thing is you had your class size update, I don't really have any specific information to share with you, you have questions on that. You basically see our numbers almost consistent with our October 1 number, not real shocking. You don't see a lot of dramatic changes typically mid-year in relation to enrollment for the schools, but that number, that information's there. It's relative to our DESI information. We've obviously made the transition from the discontinuing of the test and stay program and close contacts. We've had a very small number of positive cases. The trend seems to be moving in the right direction relative to, I think, I think you're gonna see some significant changes in the coming weeks as well in relation to a movement towards fewer requirements and expectations. We had a great response just from an informational perspective, so when we put the opt-in survey out there to make sure that people had the opportunity out of our, we had 352 staff members, so a huge percentage, and a large percentage of families, we had almost 1,600 families opt in, and it remains open. So if they didn't opt in, they can still continue to opt in. Test kits, the state has been, has delivered. We delivered the staff test kits last week, and we'll be doing that to families with notification from principals reminding parents they can expect to see them with their children. There's a different distribution depending on the age of the children within the schools, but we've got a pretty good system in place. I provided you the most recent updated COVID numbers. As I said, though, in comparison to the last two to three weeks, our positive cases are, just was 19 as of today, and I think I went up one case there, but we're not seeing a disruption, and I think it seems to be trending in a direction where I believe the mask mandate on the 28th will be revisited by the state and ultimately, hopefully come back down to this level for discussion. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions. I do typically note on that one sheet, I think it's of interest to take a look at the vaccination rates in relation to Freetown and Lakeville, those are updated numbers. We'll be getting, the positivity rates, keep in mind, are a little bit higher on the sheet for the two towns because we don't get that information. As you know, I typically send it out Thursday, so that's, it really kind of predates numbers. So I think those numbers are a little inflated in relation to town and community based on board of health conversation we're having.
I know we, thank you so much, Jean, for helping me craft that letter last week to get up, or after our last meeting to get up to the commissioner. Have we heard anything back, Rick, at this point?
I've had no correspondence or information back.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Barron.
Mrs. Fox, I also want to thank the two of you for the letter. I also very appreciative that it's on the website, right, right on the homepage website, so that was good. And I was gonna ask the same question, I assume that as soon as you do get a response.
You will get an immediate follow-up forward to me.
That's what we're looking for.
Whether it be, whether it be an email, phone conversation, whatever it may be, I will certainly communicate that out to you folks as soon as possible.
Thank you. I was going through the numbers yesterday, and it looks to me as though we're pretty much where we were the beginning of November as far as positives. I mean, we were, we were in single numbers there until November, probably when we should have made some changes, but we did, we chose not to. And I can see that we are, it looks like we're gonna head right back to those, which
We're trending in a great.
I guess hysterical, hysterically, not hysterically, historically is probably exactly the way it usually is. It's winter and people get sick more in the winter.
The piece that's not shown here is the attendance at our school, both students and staff, is outstanding, it's the best it's been in months, and for a winter month, just under normal circumstances. Just to give you an example, the other day, I think we had 12 students out at one of the elementary schools, 18 out, middle school, 17, so.
That's amazing.
You're seeing full classrooms in a return, consistent with what we'd see, maybe even going back to a few years, maybe historically better than what we've seen relative to attendance with cold and flu and so forth, so I think it's, I think we're trending in the right direction.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Sylvia.
Yes, thank you for your shift to the new changes with the testing program, just curious, and that the response was overwhelming, I think that's great. Just curious with the beginning of the student distribution, will the kids, should parents expect that kids will be going home with students, or will they be picked up? Obviously concerns with the lower elementary grade.
Yeah, so we're gonna, we are gonna backpack it, and we're gonna, and we've done it, so we're trying to not disrupt the learning day per se, so if it's an advisory in the, for the secondary schools, it'll be during the advisory period, be later in the day for children, but I do know that each of the principals will be sending home one-call messages to say, this went home with your child today. We're not gonna, they're not gonna be given at the elementary school, for example, first thing in the morning, and allow everything to transpire, but the plan would be to communicate, but, but to answer your question, we didn't feel, we felt it was too cumbersome in light of road conditions, weather, and work-related pieces to ask people to come in. So we feel comfortable and confident that as long as we communicate when it's happening, all of the test kits were delivered to the schools today with the intent to go out on Friday, and that will be communicated at each of the schools so parents can anticipate those test kits, which are secure and boxed, I showed one sample last time. So that, so unless someone makes a specific request and says that they're uncomfortable and they'd like to, we certainly will accommodate those requests.
Yeah, great, I was just curious on how that would go for.
I think the end of the day is the lifesaver, so the yogurt doesn't get smashed on it and all that. Those back.
And we do have an ample supply, and we'll be doing that every two weeks, and, you know, pretty much an honor system, and where we're heading, moving forward with this direction.
Good.
And we'll open it up to anybody who wants to be involved.
Excellent, thank you. Yes, Mr. Owen.
On the class size, to go back to this piece, I know last year we had an increased number of students that opted to do the full remote as well as homeschool. Are we seeing the numbers come back to levels that they were prior years, or is there an assumption made that we probably will be getting more back, which may impact class sizes in the coming year?
So I think we recouped, I don't, Pat, you can speak to that. I didn't, I don't, we're not back to the level we were at previous, so we.
But we're not far off.
Okay.
Our homeschool numbers are what they were before COVID.
Okay.
Pretty close, yes, they are families that historically were homeschooled, most of the others did come back.
Okay, good, thank you.
Excellent. Okay, under new business, item seven, school choice, we have a vote on that.
Thank you, Mrs. Fox, I'm making a recommendation for a vote, it's an annual piece, I kind of play that out, that each year, school committees must consider whether the district participates in school choice, and it is my recommendation to accept the vote as presented. This is going through the leadership team. It's pretty consistent with what we did last year, which we stayed clear of the elementary schools, we can make an adjustment at any point, but it's my recommendation that we, we open up three seats in grades four through 12 for a total of 27 to start this process so we can get the application on the website and available for families that are interested.
And we currently have how many?
We currently have 61 students in school choice.
Questions for Ms. Bedeira's?
This is just a vote for school choice, right?
This is just a vote for the parameters to initiate the process, yes. One, it's a vote, yes, that we're gonna continue to be a school choice district, and two, establish these initial parameters.
I'll make a motion to accept school choice as presented.
Thank you.
Don't move, a second.
Excellent, any further discussion? Go ahead.
The only thing that I would, I think we're consistent with our K to three.
Yes.
I think our consistency in the K to three, these students over the last couple of years are now moved to four to five, so, and I know just in prior years with the building administration, the numbers that we see in grade three tend to increase by a number, so I think the numbers at four and five are getting higher, that we may want to think about not offering that, I just put that out there just because of the fact of, if we look at the numbers today and the building principles have always advocated and have been in line with, we get additional ones coming into the district in that fourth grade, do we want to protect that class size in that like we do with K to three? I just throw that out there, but I look to your guys whether that be.
I shared that with Dr. Sullivan, she feels comfortable based on projected numbers and space and staffing currently, that we can accommodate it, but it's something, you're right, we'll have to monitor as potential numbers grow.
But I, I don't think last year, I think we, the same thing last year, right, Rick, 27 seats, I don't think we necessarily filled them all, or did we?
We did not.
Right, so.
No, but you're right about the third grade. We do want to watch that. All right, so I have a motion, a second on the floor, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. Donation of PPE?
It would be my recommendation to support the donation of PPE, a generous donation from Michelle Monroe, who's a licensed preschool, child care program in Freetown, for some free PPE. She has already provided that generous donation to our nurse leader, and I want to recommend that we formally request, accept that donation.
Thank you, a motion, and a second. We would definitely want to send a note of appreciation.
Absolutely.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention, motion carries, and.
Directors will report out at the next meeting due to the budget meeting.
Okay. Subcommittee updates, regional FinCon, nothing.
Most likely to be determined based on tonight's conversation.
Most likely, mhm. Superintendent Seval, we have nothing at this time. Wellness, health, Ms. Barron.
We have a meeting next week.
You have a meeting next week, okay, so we'll hear that at the next meeting. All right, great. Policy Subcommittee? Who's on that committee? Oh, Jen.
Jen. Jen, Laura, Steve.
Yeah, the state hasn't, again, we typically are driven by some state initiatives, and we haven't received anything from MASC relative to recommendations or changes lately.
And everything was, okay, good. And the Volk Subcommittee, we're not.
No update, I know they're progressing, and I think we'll probably have some information in the spring.
Yes, that's right, they had a lot of legwork. Okay, so with all of that, we can go on to the presentation.
Excellent, thank you. I'll go to the podium just to make it a little bit easier, I'm gonna ask my directors, they'll slide over, you have a hard copy, I think, for the few folks that are here, there are hard copies available, and we'll obviously use the screen, and I know Light Cam will present. This presentation will be on the website as early as tomorrow, and we'll put a link in the superintendent's corner as well. Go up to the podium just to make it a little bit easier. Present Renee will work with me. Wonders, and I'm the only thing interrupting adjournment, so I'll keep that in mind, Chair, Vice Chair tonight, in relation to our process. So first and foremost, this is the beginning of the budget process, right? Superintendent's report is a result of a tremendous lot of hard work from our Director of Finance, which I'll comment in a minute, but first and foremost, I recognize the school committee for your continued support. Steve Owens, co-chair, chairperson Jean Fox, and the remaining, and really the consistency and continuity and support I've received from you folks over the time. Obviously, your sleeves get, you know, rolled up now as it relates to my initial presentation because typically this presentation is uninterrupted, we go through, we're not getting into questions, and then we start to do the real hard work, getting into the next piece. You see the administrative team here, again, talking about consistency and continuity, have excellent leadership at all five of the schools. Director of Finance is like a 10- or 20-year veteran in relation to the budget and experienced. Kara facilitated the entire process, hopefully with my support, and certainly the central office directors involved all of the school principals, and you'll see that reflected in our priorities, but certainly recognition of this format tonight. I think, as I often do say, a budget's a reflection of our priorities, you'll see the mission statement here. In light of the fact, there's been a lot of conversation about equity and diversity and making sure that everyone's included, well, our mission statement and our vision's been saying that for some time. That's not a new premise here in Freetown or Lakeville. The district's committed to providing each student with high-quality, relevant education that promotes academic success, well-being, and responsible citizens. What you would see if you looked at our core values, which are not part of that, is an extension of that, that it involves all, and we're pretty excited to continue to keep that priority. What would a budget presentation, or any presentation that I make after eight years, not start off with a raise the bar reference in relation? In fact, in the superintendent's corner this week, Renee pointed out, she was wondering if the Olympics had already started, if you notice, it was more a reference to raise the bar, but she kind of saw my high jumper there and caught what it was after the fact. I said this at the DEI meeting the other day, a budget's a reflection of our priorities, so we should be putting our money and our resources where we feel is necessary to provide for an appropriate education. Continue to move forward, I'll, I'll say it, and I'll continue to say it, we're a good school system, don't let that get in the way of us being great, we need to keep kids and students focused, and I think we've done a very good job of that. When I say we collectively, I'm confident if we stay with these goals, we'll make it through and advance this plan through what are challenging times, and will continue to be challenging times. So now we get into the next slide, into the kind of the meet, the budget assumptions that are, that are laid out here for the community and for the school committee, right? The state aid is a slight increase at this time, obviously, that's a work in progress at the state level with the governor and, and the legislators. Regional transportation, we're seeing a slight increase, good news. Our circuit breakers estimated to increase, but that's more reflective of our population than anything, but there's an increase there. We are currently in what are challenging times, but negotiations for all contractual obligations. We have some, we have secured some bargaining units, but we're in the process of negotiating with our larger groups. Health insurance costs increase, we're anticipating, again, these are budget assumptions of about a 7.5% increase, it's actually a little bit more than that in a future slide as it relates to the fact that last year we received a, a one-month premium holiday. We're not anticipating that in proposals that are coming in or will be coming in shortly, so we are gonna see a pretty significant increase in our health insurance, and we've tried to capture that in this initial budget. Utility costs are trending upward, and I think considering the national and international news, that's probably not gonna change anytime soon, but I will say that we've seen an offset projected from some of our energy improvements. The second-year lease for the performance contract, I think we've certainly hit that at the right time in relation to train coming in prior to the pandemic, and all the work they've done for a variety of reasons, but we've also benefited from some of the, the financial implications to that. So when you roll into the budget presentation, you see the recommended budget of $43,705,240, you see the voted budget, and then the difference, it's a $1.8 million increase, $1,879,182, a 4.49% budget increase on this initial superintendent's budget. The breakdown, the slide that usually most town officials go right to, because of what it's gonna cost them, is shown here, it is shown for 22, assessment for Freetown and Lakeville, and then for 23, and what that increase looks like. Kara, maybe you can even speak just briefly to that, there's been an adjustment that we didn't have any control over in relation to the assessment for the two towns?
That's correct, so when the state considered each town's wealth factors and taxable property in each town, as, as well as the enrollment in the towns, the state computed an increase in the minimum local contribution for 8.04% for Freetown and 5.16% for Lakeville for what they would be required to pay the district to fund our education. So that, you know, it actually, usually, Lakeville has a higher increase than Freetown, so this was one of the first years that we've seen where it swung the other way.
So just to, you know, summarize, so there's a shift in a larger percentage to Freetown, but it's more related to how the town is viewed in relation to where the state looked at relative to their contribution. Again, starting point, I can share with you, as she has done real well, she has great dialogue with town administrators, both town administrators received this document in advance of tonight's session, understanding it's a public document, and so they're then gonna share it with their boards, and I know she's in the process of securing the three-ring binder and booklets that are still requested from the towns. But this will get out there publicly, they have an advanced copy of this, of this presentation tonight, with an understanding that this is the initial part of the budget process moving forward, but we feel it really does capture the needs. So now when you take a look at the breakdown, I'm also gonna ask Kara just to highlight a couple of points with me here. No real shock when you look at the 4.49%, when you consider that the, really, the backbone of this organization or any educational organization is staff, you're gonna see salaries as the largest increase, right? You're seeing a 2.28%, and that's contractual obligations, that step in schedule, that's all those things factored into an organization that has nearly 450 employees. That should not come as a shock, and you see the dollar value associated with that. You see a slight increase in technology of $138,000. Kara, maybe you could just speak to that, it's not only Chromebooks and hardware, but also a new initiative in relation to RSIS.
Absolutely, so that technology increase, the overall increase, represents not only the hardware for desktops, Chromebooks for which $75,000 would be designated toward Chromebooks, also projectors, this would be an increase over last year's budget, and it would give us a baseline with the Chromebooks. I will be illustrating in the budget book a Chromebook replacement plan that will get us through the years, I believe, 2028. The other piece that is included in this technology piece is a $20,000 placeholder in relation to a new student information system that we will be implementing. This placeholder would be, would be available in the event that we may need to run two systems for a short bit of time potentially, and also the possibility of using a different outside provider for web hosting. Currently, our student information system with Rediker, they're actually our web host provider, and we're not sure if they will continue that arrangement, or if we'd have to outsource to a different provider. So we've looked into that, and there might be a small increase due to that as well.
So you'll see, basically, a lot of our items are level-funded through this process, which obviously, when you take a factor into inflation and so forth, it's really maybe a step back, but we've had to do that to address some, some fiscal responsibility and some financial or frugal responsibility there. Insurance is reflected there, there's more detail coming up in, in a future slide. So how does this stack up with previous budgets? It's, it's in the ballpark in relation to kind of this initial budget, keep in mind that the other numbers that you see there reflected over the last five years reflect final budgets, so you gotta keep that in mind in that this is an initial budget piece, so, and yet, it's consistent with FY 20, for example, some reductions were made in the last couple of years, but obviously, nothing's been real normal in the last couple of years in relation to the pandemic and all the challenges faced, and the number of students in school and so forth, and energy costs. But, but we feel it's a great starting point relative to where the towns can have a conversation with us and allow school committee members to make some adjustments and not compromise the integrity of our, of our, of our, of our budget and of our organization. So you see the employee breakdown, because I think this is a significant slide, and we've always kept this a separate slide because it's such a large dollar amount, you're almost talking about a $1 million increase. Here are some of the assumptions taken in. Contractual step in schedule increases, the fact that we've had to assume and make some, see, some placeholders as it relates to ongoing collective bargaining. Retirements, we don't see a significant number, but those are factored in. A minimum wage increase, the district has and will continue to make adjustments accordingly, and it's not required, but it's consistent with providing an appropriate funding piece for our, for our folks. And then there are two staff here, usually we've highlighted any, any new or additional items, and what you really see reflected here is your priority as school committee members as it relates to the integrity of class size and maintaining that. You see one additional classroom teacher at Freetown Elementary School in Asswamsit, that's where we're seeing our numbers, and I think you're gonna continue to see that grow as it relates to housing, and, and we didn't see a need for any additional staff anywhere else, whether it be at the intermediate school, middle school, or high school, and reflective of trying to keep this number. But the two additional staff members are reflected, they, we have identified some grades, but we usually make some adjustment accordingly along the way, and I know we'll get into more detail on that. The health insurance slide, pretty significant, and I think it's certainly worth a second look, so when you take the last slide, almost $1 million, now you see this change and adjustment, you see a 14.27% increase, and I think, so you don't, it doesn't contradict the 7% increase, that 14.27 includes the cost savings as it relates to that premium month that was given to all of our employees. It does factor in number of employees, it does factor in our retiree insurance and the choice of coverage, which is currently out to bid through really facilitation of Kara Lees as the Director of Finance, in addition to some advisors. We aggressively went out, and so we're not just accepting our existing plan, and it is really with RFP, create a setup, and we should have in the next couple of weeks some more information there, and maybe potentially look to adjust that number in a direction that I think hopes, hopefully allows the school committee to make some adjustments. Kara, did I miss anything on health insurance yet on that page?
The only thing I'll add is we've accounted for any new individuals that might be joining us, and any retirees that might be transferring to a retiree plan, so we have accounted for that as well.
Transportation, the next slide shows regular education, slight increase in our regular transportation. Slight increase in our regular transportation. If you recall, we added a bus this past year. We maintain that one bus. If you ask the, if you ask the, our transportation provider for a student, they would like to see additional busing. We're revisiting that, and we do not have an additional bus, but we did want to note that at one point, we really just recouped two buses that we had removed a couple of years back, and we continue to take a look at the regular routes. But there's an increase there which takes into account fuel adjustments and so forth that we typically have built in. In special education, you do see a slight increase there as well of $31,000 from the previous year. That does take into account our out-of-district, and Ms. Lee's referenced that through the question Mr. Owen asked. We continue to kind of take a look at that hybrid model and hopefully maybe consolidate, make some adjustments there that work best for our kids, but also financially work to the benefit of the district. Capital debt, so we have a good page here in relation to kind of where we're, where we're heading as it relates to projects that we have finalized. You see a reduction in capital debt payments, and that's as a result of paying off the swimming pool. Specifically, the previous year, there were other athletic facilities, which include the track tennis court, and you certainly have grades in, in the middle school. I don't know if there any mention of that there. We obviously projected that and envisioned that. I don't know if you could speak even further out to that, but in general trend, right now, we don't have additional projects happening, so I don't know if there are any comments or thoughts at this point?
That is correct, and what I'll do in the budget book is I'll just provide how our future debt is maturing. I know I've provided that in previous school committee meetings, but it will give us a planning tool for looking at possible upcoming projects as well.
Thank you. Next section, special education, always an area that we take a look and examine through Director of Student Services. Liz worked closely with Kara to provide the numbers as provided. You see the total budget. You see the general fund for our operational budget. Circuit breaker reimbursement, which she referenced earlier, and I may have her speak to in a minute, and, but you also see a reduction. If you see circuit breaker and grants are subject to state funding. Grants include the American Rescue Funds, IDA, and also early childhood. I don't know if you want to speak to that reduction, Kara, or the increase in circuit breaker, just for clarification?
Yep. So the increase in circuit breaker is mainly due to the fact that the state is now allowing higher rates of reimbursement, and also 50% of the out-of-district transportation will now be provided to the district. So this $625,000 is also based on, I believe, 37, a potential of 37 out-of-district students where currently we have 35, so it does account for some growth there. And those models were explored very closely with our Director of Student Services and her staff as well. And the general fund budget also accounts for the fact that we'll be able to use an additional $225,000 towards circuit breaker to fund eligible expenditures. And the other piece that I'll note is that in FY '22, if you look at the grants, they also include some ARPA, American Rescue Plan, special grants, but these grants can be used for multiple years, I believe through September 2023. So we will not be using the entirety of that 900, of those ARPA grants of 155,000 and 13,000 in this current year. I believe it will actually, in reality, be spread a little bit towards FY '23 and potentially into '24.
Next slide just simply shows the enrollment. You could just see the greatest numbers, obviously, at the elementary level, which obviously continues to carry the burden and raise the resources as well, and I would imagine with all the gaps and everything we're facing, you'll continue to see that trend or that number continue to be there. The next slide is our E and D, and so I can proudly and pleasantly say, with the support of this school committee, we feel we are in a much better situation than we were, and we just historically showed you the numbers that were reflected. At one point, we had $80,000. We basically didn't have anything for one-time situations. We are now in a much better situation, but at the same time, we have not put the burden back on assessments to the towns, and I think we're going to continue to try to share that. We are capped at 5%, so we are not quite at that max, but we are, we are close to that. And certainly, I know Ms. Lee's is, is on top of that, and typically, that's a question that comes up when she provides the assessments to you folks and gives you budget updates throughout, but it's something I'm pretty proud of as I'm wrapping up my tenure here. I'm not so sure I, I would have bet that coffee on folks that we would be at that level four or five years ago in relation, right? There were some times that all it was going to take was in one emergency or situation, and then we really would have been going back to the towns looking for funding, and so we are in a, in a better situation from a stable stabilization account situation moving forward. The district enrollment, again, this is a real challenge these days, right? We've bounced back a little bit from the, from COVID and the pandemic, and you referenced homeschooling and, and students, you know, choosing other options. I think you would have seen, had we not had the, the significant impact of COVID, you probably would have seen a stable enrollment if you look into our previous years of about 2,800 students. We're not back there yet. I think we will be in the coming years, and I think one of the concerns that I think future administrators and board members are going to have to keep an eye on is the impact at the elementary levels. I think that's where you're going to see the significant, greatest impact from a facilities perspective, from a staffing perspective, as young families and housing becomes available, become, become available, both Freetown and Lakeville. Not that spacing are issue, aren't an issue at the intermediate school, middle school and high school, but you've got a little more flexibility, a little more space here. But it's something that's going to be, have to be really examined closely in Lakeville and Freetown moving forward. This simply reflects the numbers. The next slide, which I believe is up there right now, reflects the enrollment by town. I do think you're going to see an uptick as it relates to housing options that the town is offering. I always balance that conversation as an educator administrator of mine, town administrators and Board of Selectmen, that very often what town folks see as, as available funding and money available taps resources to, to supply adequate services, right? Folks are coming to the towns. I'll say primarily for the schools, although Mrs. Fox may challenge me that it might be a little bit to do with rail these days as well, but clearly, they want to see that their children are educated properly and want to see that they're providing that, and I think we have been a magnet to encourage and provide services for our kids, and we're proud of that. But I think we need to kind of monitor that moving forward. I have provided you a chart of school choice. You notice it was 62. I think I said 61 today is the current number, and I don't off the top of my head, which is typically a question, maybe I'm glad it's not interrupted, Mr. Owen, when somebody asks me how many seniors are coming out of that. And I don't have that off the top of my head, but I'll have it ready for the next meeting because obviously, the adjustment of those 27 slots will be somewhat shifted as it relates. We obviously factor funds and school choice funds into our assessment and as anticipated revenue moving forward. So as you look at the next slide, and I try to kind of stay on task, Mrs. Fox, for the most part, you look at the next steps in the process as we started. We have a recommended budget tonight of $43,705,240. You see what the voted budget is. It's that 4.49% increase that's starting the process. We do, we do believe that this number allows us to have viable conversations with both the town of Freetown and Lakeville moving forward, and it's clearly understood that this is the initial part of the process, although it's a little accelerated in that one town has moved up their town meeting, right? So we had to make some adjustments, and typically, we're waiting until June. One is in May and one's in June. So we do have some work in the coming, in the coming weeks moving forward. We have the opportunity to bring back together through, through the Vice Chair, our regional FinCom, which has been an effective vehicle in relation to, to future meetings. You see the schedule of meetings moving forward, allowing some budget discussion. Typically, how I've concluded this session, as you look at those discussions, is if there are questions, concerns, areas that you need more detail, as Kara, along with Renee, put together the books where you'll get all the documentation and everything that comes with it. It will allow you just to forward me those questions or through her, and we'll make sure we have those answered. Pat Kablinsky will be available. Liz Curran will be available to address curriculum, instruction, special education, in addition to any of the principals who may be called upon to answer questions. We do have tentatively set up a joint meeting in March with School Committee, Board of Selectmen, and that can be determined based on the need. We typically have it as a placeholder. The budget hearing does need to take place at that March 23rd timeframe, just for the logistics of a regional school district and when the vote in action needs to happen, though. So we'll need to have that budget vote for, by April 23rd to address the May 9th town meeting in Lakeville and then obviously in Freetown. So as we conclude tonight's initial superintendent's presentation, I absolutely would be remiss, I've said a few times, if I don't thank our Director of Finance, who once again has done a phenomenal job working with the leadership team, all the support staff, to provide you with what I think is a pretty simple document and allows us to capture big picture where we're heading as a school district in relation to the budget. I know I don't typically answer any questions, but if there's something that specifically came up or some comments in light of, there's nothing on there these, these days and this year, I'd be happy to, to respond or get information back to committee members.
Yeah, no, no question, just a couple of comments. Thank you so much, Rick, for the presentation. I just really do want to highlight that March 16th meeting, which is the Joint School Committee, Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee meeting. I remember in years past, we've had them on Saturday mornings. Mr. Maderas has showed up with coffee and doughnuts, and it's been the school committee with the school leaders just sitting around the table. So I would implore and challenge, I guess, the other members of the group to reach out to town officials, just let them know that their, their attendance is, is very important and that we're in this together. That would be great, but that's it for now, but thank you so much.
So as I referenced, the town administrators have this information, and they'll, they'll, we, you know, make sure they do with Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Owen. So when you say they have this information, Mr. Maderas, does that mean the invitations have gone out for the March 16th meeting?
We have not sent out any invites.
Can we get them out very quickly?
We should do that, you know, just even if it's a placeholder. I don't know where the discussion's going to go, but we should have them at least have it penciled in.
Yeah, my, my recommendation would be maybe Kara and I have a conversation with Mr. Owen relative to the next scheduling, an initial maybe regional FinCom, and then from that, send out invitation. But we said, but I certainly can well in advance send out an email to both town administrators to hold that place in line, because I know sometimes that's been a criticism, we didn't know about it type of thing. So to your point, we certainly can send an initial invite.
So I just want to make sure that we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is. When we send it to the administrators, do we ask the administration, administrators in both towns to notify all finance committee members, all Board of Selectmen members? That's in it?
Yes.
We spell it out carefully?
So as we put it.
We don't want a problem that we've had in the past.
So as the next step in the process is to get them the books, because they're going to want the detail beside, behind this presentation. You can absolutely include and make sure that some, because I know on occasion, you are correct, though, historically, sometimes the FinCom group has been left out of that piece, but they're part of our, our regional meeting, so.
Could I also ask for an RSVP from them a week beforehand?
Yes, perfectly appropriate.
Thank you. One other thing, Will, is this on the same subject?
No, go ahead.
I'm going to change the subject a little. Okay. All right.
Yeah, so this is on the same subject, and I just want to, I just want, I'd be remiss if I didn't say the great work that goes on at the regional FinCom level, and that's potentially why our, our town officials don't necessarily show up to that meeting, because I think they're on the same page more than ever with those meetings, and it's a testament to what Steve's done and obviously previously Derek Rasha and now Jen. So that's probably why, but I think it's an unbelievable opportunity for them to get into the room and really get their hands in the budget and talk to school leaders and find out where our rationale is for, for certain levels of funding and that. So that was just my point.
No, that's a good point. Mr. Owen?
Just a couple of things on the timeline here. I'm, I'm concerned about the timeline posted, because typically, what we've done the last few years is we would split up the budget discussion over two meetings, one with the building principals and then et cetera, not to be derogatory there. So if we're not getting the books till the 16th, it really doesn't leave us a lot of time to do legwork behind that, so.
No, you'll get, you'll, Kara, maybe you could speak to when the books are. If I said that, you'll have the books before then, but maybe you could speak.
I think they should be ready by next week.
We can certainly reach out and try to plan how we can get them to each of you.
But you are right. We are, we're going to have to take a look at maybe how we consolidate that.
And with this consolidated timeframe, have we put some thought? I know we have to submit our warrant articles, at least for Lakeville, early in this process. Is there any thought process of what a secondary article is needed or not? And I look at that, I know we talked about the CISO technology piece, if that was a good use for that or not, right? But that's a.
The student information system, the implementation of the training, we have earmarked out of the ESER II funds, and we've received approval from the Commonwealth to utilize it for that purpose. So we have those monies locked up. I don't currently have any items on the capital plan that would be, that we're ready to move forward with for a warrant article, and right now, it's difficult to argue with those ESER funds what we could use for a warrant article versus those funds.
So that's, so currently, you're absolutely right, we would normally include or make reference to an article. We do not have plans at this time based on some available grant monies that we have available to request an article.
And I don't, I know your reference on, on your tenure, we've brought in some good capital projects to the district, and I feel like we're, we're doing a great job of having them come off, but I think we need to have a plan to continually address that. So, you know, at some point, we should, especially in this cycle here.
So we'll be presenting the capital plan in the budget book, which is more of a conversation starter for future projects.
Okay, thank you.
But it would clearly allow you to identify and maybe potentially look at some priorities in the near future.
Last two points, and then I'll be done. I know that's a shocker. I'm, I'm excited that E and D is where it's at because of the unknown, but let's not forget that it took a pandemic to, to get us to this point, right? So I think the great work about how we do the budget, potential savings and everything that, we still have to continue that, but, you know, let's remind ourselves it took a, a global pandemic to do that. And then the other thing we need to probably keep in focus is, while it's great, we're getting kids into the towns, it was just elementary, it's now moving up to grade. So we probably need to take a look at our whole elementary structure as it is, because if you look at our kids in K 1, 2, and 3 right now, they're going to move up to grade, and our model at grade is, is not really conducive to the flexuality of class sizes. So it's definitely something that this committee with their advisement of the administration about how we handle that going forward, because that's going to be a, a big thing, especially we want to keep class sizes to a reasonable. With that, I'll be done.
Well, I will just add one thing, and that's that we are probably going to see growth, population growth. We're already trending that way, and it isn't just the rail, it's everything. It's about housing stock, what's available and affordability, all of those things figure into that equation. So you're absolutely right with the growth that we can project out, and Sorbit's done some numbers on it, too, that are pretty impactful. We need to be planning ahead. Mr. Senkowitz.
Yeah, and Steve, that's a great point. I remember years and years ago, I chaired the Education Model Subcommittee where it was, it was just a working group where it was school committee members, parents, administrators. We came together and we just really just kicked around educational, like, what would our district look like? How could we reconfigure it? I know we kicked around a bunch of different ideas. What would it be like having three neighborhood elementary schools, right? Looking at the use of our buildings. So that was probably 10 years ago at this point. So given that our needs have changed, our populations have changed, our numbers have increased, it might be probably good to put that on the radar and maybe get that going again. So that's just my point there. My second question is, I'm going to put Kara on the spot a little bit here, and I'm going to apologize upfront. Given that our E and D is at a pretty healthy level, is there a number that you'd feel comfortable giving right now that we'd be, you'd feel safe with having at the end of this budget process?
Well, quite honestly, I feel safe with the number we have now, and I'd like to get up to the cap of $2,540,000, and of course, that cap changes as our budget changes, it becomes 5% of our next year's budget. Does that answer your question?
It does.
Okay.
Yeah, you were pretty convincing.
Mr. Senkowitz's point, if you have seen any local papers, other communities are doing that same thing right now, looking at models in three towns, three local towns, and a couple of ministers have reached out to me relative to our current model as it relates to potential changes. So it's, it's not just us, it's, it's, you're right, the housing market, a variety of options that have made it available. In addition to, I think people have really, and I think we have a lot to be proud of, I think people that I think have seen that we have really stepped up these past couple of years and, and done a great job for our kids and provide education under challenging times.
Agreed. Mr. Owen?
It's a fair question by Mr. Senkowitz, but I'll just echo Kara's perspective. I think we need to stick to what this full committee has done in relation to E and D. It cannot, it cannot offset the operational budget or we're going to be back into a situation we were. Now, with the
Now, with the creativity the Director of Finance had come up with, potential one-time funds, then I think we'd open to the conversation. But really, just because we have this, this could go away in a heartbeat with the Director of Special Education, Student Service coming back saying, we have these four or five students that moved in, right? So I think we just need to stick to our philosophy. I remember some regional school committees wanted us to have a financial policy to go to that, and we sort of left it open to let us manage from this full committee. I think that's the direction we should keep in that piece.
And I'll just give you a one anecdotal example as you take a look at that budget book and the capital plan and some of the projects. We just, as everybody knows, had 20 inches of snow, and you look at that barn and the investment that we have made with equipment. We've made some significant equipment commitment in relation to taking care of our campus, and they're housed in a facility that we're thankful wasn't too windy, right? In light of everything that's happening. But I think we're going to have to take a close look at that outside of just our schools and look at the campus and maybe roll that into a future capital project, and you'll probably see that reflected. The Director of Facilities and I had the conversation, and I know Kara's had a conversation with Greg. If I can just note before we kind of adjourn on this, maintenance and custodial staff, supported by the towns, phenomenal job this past weekend in dialogue with me on SAD all day Saturday, all day Sunday. Many school districts, and I recognize there's some urban districts, it's a different circumstance with city streets and so forth, but there were similar comparable communities to us that either had delays or no school as a result of not being ready, and yet we were able to provide a safe environment and get our kids in here on Monday. And really, it's a credit to all the group that put the time and effort in to do what we can under tough conditions, and I just want to make sure I publicly was able to say that.
I'm sure it was quite a bit, and it was, I was looking to see what was going to happen, and we were in very good shape. I don't know where you had 20 inches of snow, because I had 28.
Again, I'm referencing it, so you have to understand that they might claim that they liked talking to me, we have a good building relationship, but when they call me on Saturday, so I get a call from the Transportation Director, I get a call from the Facilities Director, and I usually start off the conversation when they call me on Saturday and say, and they already know it, stand in line, "The great news is, guess what? It's Saturday. We have 24 hours of sun still remaining in Sunday to get to where we need to be." But the timing of it obviously made it for a safe situation, too, so that was helpful.
Yeah.
And cautiously optimistic. I know some weather's coming on the way on Friday, but it looks like, for the most part, this might just be inconvenient for us all, but kudos to our support staff. But it is an investment we need to make where we're purchasing tractors and snow blowers and so forth to maintain those and keep them in a safe place, and probably something we have to wrap into, some would say, a turf project or a fields or type of thing, or facilities outside. I think this campus, I think that might be something this school committee and this district really needs to take a look at in the near future, and you could tie all of those in to something that's reasonably supported by the community.
Ms. Barron?
I wanted to tell you, and I did write to you, I know, there was a lot of chatter over Sunday on whether or not there'd be school, as there always is. It's been going on for years and years. But most people that I talked to were very pleased that we were in school, given the fact that we are already getting very close to the end of June. I mean, we.
Yeah, we're on Friday right now, the 24th.
Right. And with every day, it gets hotter, I'm sure. And so we all appreciate what you did, and I also want to give a shout out to our bus drivers.
Yes, definitely.
Yeah, so they had to get, I mean, that's a perfect example, right? They had to get there and get their vehicles cleared out, make sure they're running and everything else on that timeframe, and did a great job. Agreed.
All right. Any other business that might properly come before the committee? Yes.
Isn't it school calendar time?
Yeah. Here's the calendar.
Next meeting.
Oh, it is.
Next meeting.
Yeah.
Renee's already given me, so if you have any input and you want to provide, we're already taking a look. I know some people are looking at vacation time and meet when meetings are. We already have a draft put together of a proposed calendar, and you'll see it unveiled at the next meeting.
Okay, good.
Are we keeping the same color scheme?
I have a question, Mr. Mederos.
Yes.
We canceled one of our first January meeting this year. Do we really need two meetings in January every January? I mean, is it necessary?
Yeah, I don't know if it is, honestly, Sherry. In fact, we actually had it, I think, really close to when we just came back, too, and I'm not so sure it was totally necessary. I'll leave that up to your discretion. We can take a look at that, we can capture that in there if you'd like.
Any thoughts from the committee?
I just, I think the agendas really run the, I mean, because if you miss one, you end up with an awful lot the next one. But I think that has to be the direction. You have to look at what's in front of you. So, no, right after the holiday and coming back in.
So what I will give you a little hint, a little preview of it, it seemed that the communities were very supportive of starting, having the kids start after Labor Day. And if you looked, meaning starting school, our teachers and staff would still come back.
Yeah.
So we're trending in this initial calendar to having the students start on the Tuesday and avoid any religious holiday, too. We took a close look at that, if you recall, we had to make an adjustment. We've taken that into account this year. But it seemed that parents appreciated that, and Labor Day appears to be early enough where it doesn't push us back too much, that in all likelihood, we would probably follow that same model where students, where teachers and workers would come back prior to Labor Day, but that families in both towns would have their kids start after Labor Day.